Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, January 14th, a little bit after 6:30. All members are present. Happy New Year to everybody and welcome back. It's been, I think, about six weeks now since we last met in a formal council meeting, but let's move on to the first order of business, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. But before I start, a scout just walked in. Son, come here.
Who said that?
Come on up front here. Don't worry, we don't bite.
He does, without protection.
What's your name?
My name is Harry Wise.
Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight? Turn it over to you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands its one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you. Why don't you tell us why you're here and here for a badge tonight?
Uh, yes, sir.
Which troop are you with?
I am in Troop 39, sir.
And where do you meet?
Uh, we meet over at Walker Elementary.
Great. Awesome. Well, welcome tonight, and we appreciate you coming down. Thank you for leading us in the pledge. I know I completely caught you off-guard. It's okay, you can tell me that. Well, thank you, son. Appreciate it. I just came down for a merit badge. Alrighty. Invitation chief, would you mind? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Chief.
If you'd like, please join us in prayer. Father God, we have so much to be thankful for. We thank you for this past year and the success of this community. We thank you for our elected leaders and their willingness to serve. We ask for your guidance, your wisdom in all our decisions. Lord, we pray for our military, our police, our fire, all those serving in government in so many different areas. Protect them, keep them safe. We pray for our health, our security. We pray for our nation. We pray for our president. Lord, take us into a strong economic outcome this year. Thank you so much for your blessings for this wonderful community. We pray it in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Alrighty. Our first order of business is ceremonial item, and I believe Deputy Chief Altman, this is yours, Community Service Award for Dr. Lang. Counsel, why don't you join me down at the bottom? And Deputy Chief, you can take over once we get there.
I'll be right there. Come in. Counselman Schenke stands.
Testing. Dr. Lang, I'll just read the summary of what that says on the award or the certificate appreciation. The Oviedo Police Department was conducting a criminal investigation involving a crime against a child when during the course of the investigation, suspect chose several occasions to speak Mandarin, one of the main Chinese language dialects, in an attempt to hinder the investigation. Dr. Lang, a professor at the University of Central Florida and a native speaker of Mandarin, volunteered to assist by painstaking, reviewing, translating, and transcribing numerous recordings during his free time. Thanks to his gracious assistance, Dr. Lang an arrest was made in this case, resulting in 12 felony charges, one misdemeanor charge, and they violated felony probation. I can tell you, finding somebody to translate Mandarin Chinese is not an easy process in the United States. We basically did a search around the country, and there's a couple of companies that do it, but the rate they charge per minute or per word is pretty substantial, and this was, uh, this case here was a pretty lengthy. And Dr. Lang volunteered his time, and without it, we couldn't, uh, we wouldn't know what he said, and what he said definitely helped our investigation. And this is our Community Service Award for helping your community and helping take somebody off the street that was a predator to the children in this community. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. to help in that particular situation, so we thank you. That's the least that we could do for Dr. Lang. All right. Next item on the agenda is citizens' comment. I do not have any written requests. Is there anybody in the audience who has anything they'd like to address City Council on that's not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, I'll close public comments, and I'm going to move over to the approval of the minutes for December 3rd, 2012. Would you like to entertain a motion? Do so.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. There are, one, two, three, four, five, six, we have seven items on our consent agenda this evening. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Britton.
I'm looking at the agenda. Did we approve the minutes for the December 3rd and December 5th meetings?
Uh, no, we did not. I'd like to entertain a motion to also approve the minutes for the December 5th meeting.
So moved.
Work session.
Second.
Motion second, in discussion. Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman, pointing that out. Consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Would you want to make a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I just have one question, if I may. Ms. Brazil, on Resolution 2618-13, it's item number five, the Selectron Voice Utility System. My question on that is, I was reading through the paperwork, and I see where folks are going to be able to go online, use the phone to pay, get a copy of a bill, and such, but I saw in there, and I thought they had to have their account number in order to do that. Is there any other way that people can access the system? Because, you know, they might not always have that account number, might not always have their user ID, but, you know, everybody has social security number or something. Any thought being given to that?
I don't know of any provision to do it by social security number. It does require an account number. Jerry, if you have any information additional, but I don't know.
Okay.
They can call up and get their account number, and then call back and do their transaction with Selectron.
I just, you know, I was thinking through to, you know, when you're sitting there and it's late at night, city hall's closed, and you're reasonably going to use the system, you know, and you don't have this information, it becomes more frustrating. So if there's any way to build into it a little bit more user-friendly way of accessing it, you know, by some information that they give us at the time of turning a service on, which social security number is one of them, I would assume. Not always. Okay. Well, if we could just maybe think that through a little bit, I think that would just make it as user-friendly as possible rather than frustrating. You know, they want to pay their bill before the next day, and, you know, they can't do it because they don't have their bill in front of them, their account number, or any of that stuff.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I thought that I read in here that it could be either be your account number or a password that you come up with?
I think you can eventually establish that and set it up at a later time.
Establish a password, so something you can remember.
We'll look into all the options. Surely the intent of this is to be as customer service friendly as we possibly can, so thank you.
Yeah, 'cause it says account number or customer ID number. So, I mean, those are only things that are on the bills. How about calling a QR code? Have we looked at that? You know, where somebody can zap the bill, or haven't gotten that far yet. Alrighty.
You know, Mr. Mayor?
Step at a time.
Real quick, you know, even some of the big financial institutions, you know, Bank of America, Centrus, you go on, they'll, they'll take your last four of your social, which you can remember. So, yeah, 'cause you don't want to give the whole thing. That'd be pretty bad for identity, but, you know, maybe look into the last four. That usually works, and every time I'm on something, it's always, "What's the last four of your social?"
Right.
And you remember.
You know, or is this the image that you signed up for, or something like that? Alrighty. It was just a question. Thank you.
I'll look into it.
Is there anything else on the consent agenda? That's the only question I had. Seeing none, call the vote. Motion on table is to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. First, Southwest Financial, welcome back. Jerry, it's nice to have you back in Oviedo. Congratulations. Get working there with Jerry and save us lots of money, please.
And if you have to go home for dinner, you don't have to stay. We won't be offended. Go.
Yeah, if we called your item?
You're done.
Please, go right ahead. Alrighty. Next item, we're up to public hearings. Item number 11, Ordinance Number 1550. It is a Comprehensive Plan Amendment from American Land Investors. I will turn this over to our City Manager, Ms. Brazil, for a brief introduction.
Thank you. You recall this item. It's a request to amend the city's comprehensive plan, future land use map change, to change the future land use designation of approximately 9.79 acres from Seminole County Low Density Residential to City Low Density Residential. The property consists of 9.79 acres that are located on the west and the south of State Road 434. The applicant is Dwight Saethoff of American Land Investors. It is recommended tonight that City Council read Ordinance Number 1550 by title only, conduct a public hearing, and adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. Mr. Groot, would you please read Ordinance Number 1550 by title only?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending Ordinance Number 896 of the City of Oviedo, Florida, said ordinance being the comprehensive land planning ordinance within the City of Oviedo, Florida. Said amendment changing the future land use of approximately 9.79 acres located on the west and south side of State Road 434, from Seminole County Low Density Residential, LDR, to City of Oviedo Low Density Residential, LDR, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. That's ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. At this time, Mr. Saethoff, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. This is a public hearing, as we announced earlier. I'll open up that portion of it right now. Is there anybody in the audience who has any comments on Ordinance Number 1550? This is second reading and adoption. Seeing none, we are going to close the public hearing portion of the meeting and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor?
Make a motion to adopt the Ordinance Number 1550.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor?
Nope.
Counselwoman?
I'm good.
Councilman Schenck?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Britton, any questions?
Good.
Alrighty. Well, hearing that everybody is happy with this, we will move on and call the question. The motion on the table is to adopt Ordinance Number 1550. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we are on to Ordinance Number 1551, a companion ordinance. It is the zoning map amendment for American Land Investors, and at this time, I'll turn it over to our City Manager, Ms. Brazil, for a brief introduction.
Thank you. In conjunction with the previous item, this is a request to amend the official zoning map, to change the zoning of the 9.79 acres from Seminole County Agricultural, A1, to City Residential, R1. The property consists of the 9.79 acres located on the west and south of State Road 434, and again, our applicant is Dwight Saethoff of American Land Investors. It is recommended that Council read Ordinance 1551 by title only, conduct a public hearing, and adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. At this time, Mr. Groot, would you please read Ordinance Number 1551 by title only?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending Article 4, Section 4.1 of the city's Land Development Code, said section being the official zoning map of the City of Oviedo, Florida. Said amendment changing the zoning district of approximately 7.9, excuse me, 7.7, I'll get it right, 9.79 acres located on the west and south side of State Road 434, from Seminole County Agriculture, A1, to City of Oviedo Residential, R1, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. That's ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. At this time, Mr. Saethoff, do you have anything to add? Alrighty. Moving along, this is a public hearing and the second reading of this ordinance. At this time, I will open up the public hearing portion. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on Ordinance Number Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor?
Make a motion to adopt the Ordinance Number 1551.
Second.
A motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, any comments?
Nope, looks good.
Counselwoman? Councilman Britton?
Good.
Councilman Schenck?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, none for me. Motion on the table is to adopt the Ordinance 1551. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we're up to item number 13, Ordinance Number 1560. It's a non-exclusive commercial solid waste franchise agreement with Gator Waste. Ms. Brazil, can you give us a brief introduction, please?
Thank you. This is a request for Council to consider enacting the non-exclusive commercial solid waste franchise agreement with Gator Waste LLC for October 1st, 2012, through September 30th, 2013, and renewable annually. It is recommended that Council read Ordinance Number 1560 by title only, conduct a public hearing, and adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. At this time, Mr. Groot, can you please read Ordinance Number 1560 by title only?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to the City of Oviedo, Florida, providing for the granting of a non-exclusive franchise agreement to Gator Waste LLC for the collection of commercial solid waste, providing for the imposition of certain terms, conditions, and requirements relating to the franchise, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for noncodification, and providing an effective date. That's ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. At this time, is the applicant present? Nope. Okay. Moving on to our public hearing portion of this, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on Ordinance Number 1560? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselwoman?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1560.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Counselwoman? Uh, Councilman Britton, will you second?
I didn't second, but I'm okay with it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Schenck?
I'm fine.
Councilman Britton, you have a bit? Deputy Mayor? Alrighty. Seeing no questions, we will call the question on Ordinance Number 1560. Motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, first reading of ordinances, our first one is Ordinance Number 1561. It is a non-exclusive commercial solid waste franchise agreement with Hubbard. Ms. Brazil?
Thank you. This is a request for Council to consider enacting a non-exclusive commercial solid waste franchise agreement with Hubbard Construction Company for the period of January 1, 2013, through September 30, 2013, and renewable annually thereafter. It is recommended that Council read Ordinance 1560 by title only, and schedule your public hearing for January 28, 2013.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. You meant 1561.
Correct. Thank you.
Mr. Groot, can you please read Ordinance Number 1561 by title only for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the City of Oviedo, Florida, providing for the granting of a non-exclusive franchise agreement to Hubbard Construction Company for the collection of commercial solid waste, providing for the imposition of certain terms, conditions, and requirements relating to the franchise, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for noncodification, and providing an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on Ordinance Number 1561 for January 28, 2013, at approximately 6:30 PM, here in the Oviedo City Hall, Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Nope. Joseph, or let me go to Ms. Brazil first, I'm sure she'll go to you. Ms. Brazil, can we get a little bit more of an explanation of what we're doing here?
For allowing the Hubbard Construction Company? Yes, we have.
Just curious what they're doing.
We have Joseph. You may come forward. He'll inform you of this item. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Joe Grishauskas, utility manager. Before you tonight is Hubbard Construction. They have a asphalt plant in the City of Oviedo on Allen Avenue. They have requested, they also own a landfill out in Apopka, and they have requested to take yard trash in and recycle it and bring it over to their landfill for reuse and distribution. Since it is a solid waste function, the mechanism for the city is a franchise. This franchise is specific for, um, for yard trash processing only at the site.
Who's going to be bringing yard waste there? Are we going to dump ours there?
It would be commercial. It's possible. It's potential that the City of Oviedo could create a economical situation by recycling it there, too. There's no rates or anything else established yet.
Alright. And they'll pay a franchise fee to the city?
Correct.
Based on whatever ordinance is we have in place at the time. Alright. Thank you, Joseph. Anybody have anything else? Alrighty. We have a motion on the table to conduct the second public hearing on January 28 at approximately 6:30 PM here in the City Council Chambers. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to resolutions, we have none. Our only discussion item are committee assignments for council members. Ms. Brazil, you want to do a brief introduction for us?
Sure. This is council's opportunity to make your committee appointments for fiscal year 2012, 13. Each year, we allow the opportunity for interaction with each of the, I think we have 12 different boards now and committees that council participates on, and this is your opportunity to review the appointments and elect your representatives.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. Let's make this easy. Is everybody happy with what they've got? Yes, 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 yes?
Good.
Alrighty. Everybody happy with keeping it all the way it is? Consensus?
Yes.
Good? Counselwoman, you're good? Alrighty. There we go. That was easy. City managers report.
It went so fast. Give me just a moment.
I'll skip over to the city attorney. Lonnie, what do you got? Anything for us?
Not this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty. Back to the city manager.
He's bought me the test.
I knew he was going to say nothing, so...
Just a couple of reminders. We do have the February 4th work session scheduled instead of the council meeting, where we have to talk about the beginning of our strategic planning and some key budgeting items. Also want to remind you of the state of the county that is coming up in February with the Seminole County Regional Chamber of Commerce, and this weekend, of course, with Martin Luther King, a Martin Luther King event coming up on the 21st, and the Oviedo Citizens in Action Breakfast on January 19th.
Ms. Brazil, did we get a table for the Seminole County Luncheon yet?
I just got the information today. Be happy to get us a table if that's council's pleasure.
I think we usually do, so why don't we continue that, down that path if it's the pleasure of council?
What date is that?
That is February 27th.
27.
Uh, the Weston Lake Mary.
27 or 22, I'm sorry.
27.
27.
11:30 to 1:30. There's corporate tables of eight available.
Okay. That sounds good. Everybody just email the city manager, let him know if you're attending or not, and we'll fill the table up.
I can go.
Counselwoman, you'll have two different tables that you can sit at.
Yeah, well, I'm going to sit with you guys this time.
Yay! Alright. Go us.
It's 11, a long time.
Well, she sat with state at the chamber luncheon, which is fine, so now we're at the county, so she comes back to the city.
Yeah.
We appreciate that. We know where her heart really is when she's sitting at those other tables.
Yep.
No worries. Alrighty. So, we're moving on. Your city manager reported, that was all you had, Ms. Brazil?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. Lonnie, you're good?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Schenck?
Happy New Year, everybody. A couple of just quick updating kind of things. The city manager, Catherine, um, what's the status with trying to work, trying to get an organization or working with an organization, or putting together a nonprofit for the parks?
Our representative is Drew Bolwer, and he's working with the Evans and Dave Axel, and I don't know if he's prepared for an update, but we can get that update for you on where that is. I know that's been a slow start, but I know Drew's been speaking with him. We'll get you an update as soon as we can.
We have one at the next meeting, maybe?
We can have it before then for you.
Okay.
At the end of the week.
The, um, and also, I know I emailed about the Syris Systems this morning, and I said I guess it was just me, kind of, or it may have been Axel's Y something, but I got it in later on. But, um, what's the status? Because you can't download, you can't, I don't think we've made progress in terms of, I know from Barbara's side, the archiving, the imaging, all that's great. From this council side, we're happy, but going in as a, from the public side, you can't download the packet, you have to be online, you have to always be online to look at it and see the thing. So I'm wondering if it offers still, as much as it did offer previously to us, and I also remember them saying that they would, there would be a downloadable PDF, fully bookmarked downloadable PDF available, so I'd like to see if that's going to be available, but if you take a look at the, from the user's point of view, from the public, and really concentrate on that, I know for months, we were talking about it to the public, saying we're going to offer, offer, offer a lot more. I don't know if we're living up to that, if you look at it and really say, okay, how would somebody use it? Much like the mayor was saying, well, you know, if you're going to call in and do certain things with the voicemail system, I don't know that this is really user-friendly in terms of, let me just download this, take this with me and be able to use it. We can't do that currently. You have to be online, you have to be connected at all times to be looking at it. So, just something to look at from the user's point of view, from the public's point of view. I don't know if it reaches up to that, and what state we're in, maybe get an update again next meeting, kind of where we're at in the total of the process, and say, where are we at? What do we expect? What can we expect to finish this out? What can we expect to finish this out? Because I know we said, do it right, take your time, but we are into it for a long time, and I'd like to know when that endpoint is expected and we should be.
Yeah, we do have, there is a button there that says packet, but doesn't.
It doesn't download, it doesn't, yeah, you can't do it on your tab, on the iPad you can't do it, but on your computer you can.
And that packet doesn't download it?
No.
The packet?
Yeah. You get to see it online.
Oh.
Yeah. As I said, I thought it would download it, too. It's a little bit interesting, so, that's why I said, just let's look at that and take it, you know, see that it really reacts to what we want it to. This week, we had a, one of our, the Allen roadway, I know we called Bobby, and he probably got harassed by a couple of people. I know one called me, and probably called, it was the same one that called City Hall multiple times. But just to make sure that we have whatever procedures, I don't know if that guy is going to continue doing roadwork for us, whatever, I didn't think so, but, you know, that they do follow our procedures. I know that they didn't. That was the big problem, was they weren't following our procedures. But then how we react and make sure, like I said, that was part of the, part of the thing that really upset the person who had a business back there, was like, hey, this is going on again, day two and stuff, so we want to make sure. But I know they reacted very quickly once they were really made aware of it. Don't get me wrong, I know the city staff, I have no problem with their reaction, how they work, but just that, you know, these, this contractor worked without, worked outside of what we expect of them, and hopefully either, like I said, we're not going to be working with them, it seems, but take that into consideration as we move forward working with them. And the other thing is, as I emailed today about signs, we've been signed out in essence for, it seems like a couple of weeks now, and I was frustrated again today, passing by two-by-fours stuck in the ground with a banner hung between it that looked like garbage to me, and this isn't the first one that's at that location, is, you know, a pool company had two-two-by-fours stuck in the ground with a banner stuck between it that was garbage to me then, and luckily or unluckily, nothing happened from it, except that it did get blown out in the wind and torn apart, so it wasn't there after about a month or so. But, you know, we've been looking at this sign code for, and I just look back, two years ago at least, at least, you know, we need to get it. This, you know, many municipalities have done this, we're not creating anything new. So to me, to look at this and say, well, we're allowing two-by-fours to be stuck in the ground with what I consider a sheet essentially draped between it, and this two-by-four is cockeyed and everything, and that's what we're allowing out there and saying that's legal?
Is there a permit, counsel?
No need for a permit, sir.
Oh, one of the, one of the, one of the.
Well, that's, well, I'll give you the part two of this, it's an even funnier one, no, no. It doesn't need to be for those signs. All they look at is height, sign size, and that it's setback, the setback. The other thing is that it's a, it's a grand opening sign, after a year of being there.
I wanted to see the permit, that looked a little bigger.
I called, I called and they looked, and I said the same thing. But that's a grand opening sign, which again, after a year of involvement, the thing is you get 45 days with a grand opening sign. So if I'm a smart guy, I'm going to look at this and, oh, I never did a grand opening sign, it's been three, four years, but hey, I can get 45 days versus 17 days with a special, we'll have a grand opening and call it whatever.
That's the point, I mean, they drew up a two sheets between the six, but that one, I think I know what he thought it was.
Yeah.
It's bigger than six square feet.
It looks kind of large to me, but, but I know Sean went out and looked at it, but he said it falls under, but it didn't need a permit. Really, it gets, you know, they just look at it at zoning and just go boom, 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 as long as it fits under the, you know, size, height, clearance from the roadway, it's not in the right way, they say it's okay. So, you know, we got to look at this finally, you know, I hate to say that because I know we went back to the drawing board multiple times, but do this the right way, because I, you know, the expectations were a lot higher than, than that, and we were just talking about it last week, and I feel like now it's starting to, we're starting to see, you know, we updated it in December, November, December, to make, to fix some of these things and catch some of these things, and now I think the, the users are finding the ways that it can enhance, they can enhance themselves at our expense, and these are not the intentions as to have, I said, two cockeyed two-by-fours with a sheet as a sign, it looks like the Little Rascals almost to me.
I'll be honest, we used to have much higher standards. I don't know what happened along the way.
Went backwards.
There is a clear, in my mind, and I said this earlier, there is a clear council intent, and there is a clear disconnect somewhere. So if you can do your, do your best to figure out what it is, and let's get back to doing what the council's intent are, which is the work of the people, we'd appreciate that. You know, we've got to figure this out, and, you know, councilman said something about businesses figuring out how to get around it. I'm just curious if it's not us trying to facilitate, yes, to the nth degree, and we're telling them how to get around it. I, I don't know. You know, a grand opening now, a year after you're open, I would assume that we have a definition of what a grand opening is, it's, you know, the day you opened your business. And if we don't, and perhaps we do, but.
And just, I'd like to see this, you know, that we get our hands around it and get some timetable and some dates and not, like I said, we started sign code rewrite two years ago, and it took, because it's so complex and we had to do it right, we were at it for about two years, and it's not right, and that bothers me that we took this long to get not right in huge, I don't consider this, the flags that we were just talking about last week, now this, these are not small things in my mind, these are big, like I said, I think we've taken a step backward, it's either we've taken a step backwards or we had things sitting there that now, I don't know which way it was. There may have been stuff sitting there that we never knew, and we cleaned up a lot, and now it's, oh, now we'll take advantage of this thing that's sitting there, that's, that's available. We didn't need to go that deep into it, but now we can, so we'll do this. But I really think we need to look at it and really get a handle on it, because, like I said, I don't believe it's meeting the intent at all, and it's been way too long in the process to try and get it to meet intent, and then an update to get it to meet intent, and I don't think we're there yet. So I'd like to see that put in the fire and have dates and when we can start seeing the results of that and have updates on it. Thank you.
All right. Deputy Mayor, you're up.
Oh, I'm good. Not three, four times.
Counselwoman?
All right. Well, I will start out that we attended the chamber meeting.
Wait, 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 do you have it all on your iPad now?
I have a little bit on it, yeah.
I'm not looking at it, because otherwise she has to keep it. Uh-oh.
We attended the chamber meeting this past Thursday, and it was the state of the cities, and we had Mayor Charles.
Lacy.
Lacy. I can't believe I forgot his name. And of course, Mayor Presam Pierre, who did a fantastic job talking about our city and all the wonderful things that are happening, Oviedo and a park, and Oviedo ER.
Oviedo ER.
Oviedo ER, yeah. Mayor, you did a great job.
Thank you, counsel.
You always tell the best things about our city. I'm looking forward to the employee appreciation luncheon on the 23rd. I will be there. I have a tri-county meeting on Thursday, which is going to be kind of interesting. They're going to have a, the new officers are going to be sworn in. Tony Ortiz is the president now. Joanne Krebs is going to be the past president. So it's going to be rather interesting.
Who's president now?
Tony Ortiz from Orlando.
City council.
Yeah. He's an ex-cop.
Yes.
Very nice guy. Saturday is the.
Deep booming voice.
I'm sorry?
He has a deep booming voice.
Yes, he does. Yes, he does. Got the breakfast on Saturday. I will be attending a CBC meeting coming up, so it's like the year is starting and all the meetings are coming.
Back in the plan, action.
But I did want to share with you something from Seminole State. We're going to have a community event on Wednesday, January 30 at 7:30 at the New Altamont Campus to show our, the new master plan and to have some input from the citizens and people in the area. It's going to be quite interesting, so if any of you are interested in coming, you know, please come as my guest.
What time is that?
7:30 in the morning in Altamont. I wanted to say that I am very pleased to see that the Citizens Police Academy is expanding into government, and I do have, I'm going to have a whole page of suggestions, chief, so I'll send them, you know, I was going to do it today and I just didn't get a chance because we're having our house done, we're ripping off all the siding and we're replacing it. And the reason I'm telling you this story is because when it first came to start, there was a contractor there, there were the, the project manager, and all these other people, and a front door guy was there, and we were all talking, and they were telling me how wonderful Oviedo is, and how thrilled they were that when they work with our departments, that it's wonderful. They, they said, now, I got to tell you, he said, many years ago, we hated to come to Oviedo and work. It was, it was very difficult, he said, but everything runs smooth, he says, we do a lot of work in Oviedo, and he says, and your people are fantastic, it's a great city. So I really felt good about that, that, because they're just all over my house like ants, you know, and so it was, it was a nice, a nice compliment to our city.
The CDC has really made a huge difference than what we had, and it just shows that it's a change of a person that made a huge difference.
Right.
It was, it could have been that way all along, but the people that were here chose to not do it.
Yeah.
Now we have guys doing the right thing, so you have to tell those guys from the council that that's a good compliment.
It was a very good compliment.
You got permits for the county, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Now, make sure when I mess.
Now, notice, notice, I didn't ask that question.
No, 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 they came in for the permits, and they said, we didn't know that you worked for the city. I said, yeah, I sure do.
Now, you're still, we'll be getting them quick.
Yeah, they're working hard. So that was it. Happy New Year, everybody. I'm looking forward to another great year with, with the city of Oviedo and all of you.
Good stuff this year.
Yes. And, yep, that's the end.
Councilman Britton?
All right. Couple of things here. I did attend the Calno meeting in Altamont last week, and I think I sent the meeting minutes from December to you guys, and I'll send the, the meetings, the minutes from that meeting to you as soon as I get them. You can look through that. They, they did present a, made a presentation of the incubator that Altamont is creating out of their, their park area to complement the Seminole County School Nature Trail out there on, I think it's on 419, so I think that is actually turning out to be a very, very nice place for high school kids to go and get, get some of that environmental education that, that we're trying to, to bring to them. I will have a CSBG meeting this week on Thursday. Those are usually pretty, pretty routine. We had an ION meeting last Thursday, and I believe what Ben is telling me is that the sidewalk project is, is completed, they're just doing closeout. There's a few things, Bobby, I think on Reed and Wilson, some drainage issues, and what we decided is to, to look at those as drainage issues and not sidewalk issues. So maybe we can get the stormwater guys to take a look at that, it's just some areas where the water's collecting when it rains, but overall, I think that sidewalk project is a, is a great enhancement. And the report we got is that the, the block grant for the Round Lake Park improvements is in final approval for, at HUD, and they're not sure when that will get out, so I thought, I'd like to suggest that when we have our open house with Congressman Mica, that we maybe just put that on a list of, of things that we're looking for status for, because that's a, that's a federal agency and they can make that inquiry for us and get, get that thing cut loose. And I believe that's, oh, one other item, I've spoken to Bobby, and this, this is regarding the intersection of Lockwood Boulevard and Seminole Creek, which is, I think it's been on the list for improvements for quite a few years now, and it's, frankly, I drive it every day, and it's, it's scaring me, and I'm getting a lot of questions as to when that, that improvement project's going to take place. So I believe Bobby says it's approved for, number one on the list for next year, which is 2013-14, Bobby? What I'd like to do is if we can find it in the budget, is maybe accelerate that and see if we can start design this year for an early implementation next year, because I'm very concerned at the amount of traffic that's going to Seminole State, UCF, and Hagerty in the mornings and afternoons, that, that's, that's become a dangerous situation.
It's going to be a left-hand turn lane, right? To allow.
Right. You can't make the left-hand turn, and you can't make a left-hand turn out of the neighborhood without, because of the curve there is a very short line of sight from the curb coming from the north.
Okay.
So.
I don't have a problem with that. Bobby, that's been an issue for, as your councilman said, I mean, for a while, so.
So if we can do that, I would be very grateful.
Anybody have an issue with that?
Nope.
No? You can find the money, Bobby, move it up.
And that.
Well, let me, let me, let me re-ask that question. Ms. Brazil, if you can find the money, can you move it up?
I know Bobby can get it done, but not the money.
That's, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Just real brief, because it's been six weeks, and if we went through the calendar, we could